To the City Council Meeting of Lathrop Village, I would ask for Madam Clerk to do roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cantor.
Present.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Here.
And Councilmember Stallings. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I invite everyone to jump, say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, before the approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, can we excuse Councilwoman Stallings?
Can I get it?
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Stallings.
Anyone would like?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? She's excused. Okay, so, as I was going to say, we should excuse Councilwoman Stallings. So now, we're just going to go straight to the approval of the agenda, except we're going to change the agenda around just a smidgen. Under the action request, I would like to move H to A. And then everything else will fall underneath that. That's pretty much it, right? Oh, we're not doing that. It's H.
It's H.
Just trust me. It's H. For you, it's G. For me, it's H. We have a bunch of different agendas going on, so... I was already corrected by our city attorney, so what he says goes. Okay, so now I need to close the City Council. Correct. And then opening the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, we're going to close the City? Go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, but did we do a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
Oh, no, I skipped right over it. I was going too fast, sorry.
No problem.
I'll make a motion to move item H to item A in the agenda under the action request. Second.
You want all the agenda to be... So, that's where I have an issue at, because something that's in the consent agenda I have a question about. So, I need to pull that out.
You can pull that out when you get to item 6 on the consent, after we come back from the ZBA meeting.
Okay. So, we're just doing the... Okay. So, it's been moved to second.
Yep.
For the...
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is approved. So now, I will close the City Council meeting and call to order the Zoning Board of Appeals. First up.
Mayor and Council, what you have before you, the public hearing on an appeal filed by Les Stansbury and Valencia Morris at 1-8471 Roseland Boulevard, Lathrop Village, Michigan 48076, to obtain variances from the zoning ordinance, Section 4.12.1F and 3.1.2. D, regarding installation of a generator in the side yard and within a side yard setback as follows. Section 4.12.1. F requires that any permanent generators on a residential parcel be placed in the rear yard. The applicant is requesting the generator placed in the side yard. Section 3.1.2. D requires that a generator on a residential property have a minimum setback of five feet with a total of 15 feet for both sides. The applicant is requesting a three-foot setback with a total of five feet on both sides. And also, you may note that you have the approval of the ZBA minutes of July 11.
We're going to do that after we do the public hearing. I jumped forward. So, is there anyone here for the public hearing for the 18471 Roseland? The homeowner is here. Oh, okay. Would you like to... Is there any questions or...
Yes, I have a question.
Public hearing first.
Public hearing first.
Oh, sorry. My fault. Go ahead. Sorry.
So, is there any... From the public that has a question about the approval of the setback? It's not setback.
Generator.
Okay. Well, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And then you said after we do the public hearing to do the approval of the minister after the approval.
Yeah, the ZBA board minutes from the July 11, 2018 meeting need to be approved.
Okay. So, I need to approve the zoning boards of appeals, the minutes from July 11, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the ZBA minutes from July 1, 2018. Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The minutes are approved. So now, we're going to jump down to C, which is the action request, consideration of a motion to approve, denied the zoning variance request for Les Stansbury and Valencia Morris, property owners at 18471 Roseland, to obtain variances from the zoning ordinance, Section 4.12.1. F and 3.1.2. D, regarding installation of a generator in the side yard and within a side yard setback.
I have one question. I'll go first.
This will be the action request.
Make a motion to...
Do we have to make a motion first?
You can make a motion before you have a discussion or if it's already been introduced by the city administrator. If there's any specific questions for the applicant or the administrator or myself, council can ask those prior to the motion.
I have a question.
Knock yourself out, Bruce.
Go ahead, Ian.
Okay, so, and I'm not sure if you're the applicant, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so...
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
Yeah, can you please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you do blackout of this?
Yeah, he's dressed nicely. He looks nice. Thanks. So, the question I have, so I reviewed the installation manual for the Generac generator, which is what you're going to install.
Yep.
And there's a section in there that tells you exactly where the generator should be installed. So, it should be five feet away from the building. It should not have an overhang, nor should it have a window on that side. I wasn't able to see a photo of where it's going to be installed.
It's going to be installed probably two feet from where their air conditioner compressor is. The company that's installing it picked the location where it gets installed.
Okay. Is there a window and is there an overhang on that side?
There's not an overhang besides the eve on the roof. The window is not near where the generator is. It's on the house. There's two, three windows on that side of the house, but the generator is closer to the bush.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you submit a photo on that?
I gave whatever the third-party engineering... I sent the guy whatever he asked for. He didn't ask for a picture of the house. He just asked for a picture of the locations.
Okay. And the reason why I'm asking is to... That specific requirement in the manual is to prevent carbon monoxide poisoning.
Yep.
So, and you understand the reason why I'm asking that?
No. When the Oak Electric guys came out, they were very specific about where they wanted it to be, how far away it had to be, where it exhausted to, and that's why they picked that location.
Okay. And then I just have one...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. I actually have one quick question. So, I went out and took a look, and it's a nice house on a very weird lot.
It was a non-conforming lot.
Yeah, exactly. So, the neighbor on Somerset Place has written a letter. We saw that, you know...
Okay.
Yeah. And then, but I was curious if there's been any discussion with the neighbor on Roseland, because that looks like they're going to be closer to the generator. I know they actually had an opportunity. They must have been notified because they're within 300 feet, so they had an opportunity to speak. But I was just curious.
The one on the other side of the...
As you're facing your house, I think on your left, next to the arborvitae.
Across from you, next to...
Yeah.
She didn't say anything, considering the fact that all I've done for her house. She hasn't said anything.
Okay. But she had the opportunity, so, yeah.
Yeah.
To voice an objection via her notification, so...
And that's why we put the arborvitae. There are 12 feet, so you won't see it from her side. There's five feet of burning bush where a van lives.
Right.
And then, the landscape guy is going to put another bush in front, so you won't see it from the street view.
Right. The last question I have, so for the Generac enclosure, because I can't remember if it's insulated or not.
Yep.
It is insulated. Okay.
Yeah, when it runs, it sounds about the size of my air conditioner.
Right. Right. Okay. So, and the photo that was in the packet, I didn't see where it was exhausting to. Is there a...
You know, you don't really see that even when you have the unit sitting there, because it's all enclosed. It's got the little louvers on the side.
Okay, so that's the exhaust.
That's all you see.
Okay. Got you. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
No problem.
Mayor and Council, you also have in your packet the review from the planner. And I just want to bring to your attention on page six of the ZBA packet. At the bottom, item five, additional consideration. They were identifying that the petitioner could be requested to complete a partial survey to confirm that the proposed location on the generators located entirely within their property lines.
We can request that, or it's going to be automatic that he does the survey?
It's not automatic.
Okay.
And I think that's more for his protection than anything else.
So, can we move to approve it with the stipulation that the survey is done? Or the partial survey?
You could ask the applicant if he's inquiring into that. Or, I mean, it's a... Yeah, you could put it...
I think that was a suggestion. I mean, that was a suggestion, right? Not a requirement.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
To answer your question about the survey, when we bought the house, we obviously had a survey. The way the house is laid out, the arborvitae are sitting on the property line.
Okay.
Because they all have a fence. So, we made sure to put the arborvitae... Well, we tore a bunch of other stuff down. And then, we put the arborvitae there, all the other bushes, so that we would know exactly where the line was. So, anything that's... Since you saw everything on the inside of arborvitae is on the property. Everything on the other side of arborvitae technically is on her property, even though we maintained that.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Nothing for me. Thank you.
So, I'm not only that one. We would have a motion for that.
City Attorney, do we activate a motion to approve to...
Yeah, the request would be to grant a motion granting the variance. I believe there's a suggested motion in your packet to approve, prove condition, deny the zoning variance request for 18471 Roseland Boulevard, to place permanent power generator in the side yard, Section 4.12.1. F, and to permit a three-foot accessory structure setback with a total of five feet on both sides, 3.1.2. D.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the zoning variance request for 18471 Roseland for a permanent power generator in the side yard and to permit the three-foot accessory structure setback with a total of five feet on both sides. Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Or any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, I will...
Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Second.
Moved in third, that's the second. So, it's adjourned. So, now, getting back to our consent agenda. This is where I had a question on... If I can figure out where all this stuff is. Too much paperwork. It was on page 38 of 177. So, it was under Portless Gardens for Fall Garden Maintenance, Gateway Entry. And then, also to go back to... Of course, I lost it. There was another entry for leaf pickup? Leaf cleanup, excuse me. And it was under... Where is it at? It's $400 apiece. Please someone else who found that. Okay, here it is. $300 apiece, under buildings and grounds. So, it said cleanup leaves behind City Hall, 300 and 300. One is on page 36 of 177. Then, the other one's on page 38 of 177.
I can answer the one on the cleanup of the grounds. Those were the leaves that were on the parkway, essentially surrounding City Hall, the entire park.
Okay.
And it's not included in DPS service contract or any other contract that we have. So, we did hire contractors to take care of that.
Okay. That's all I want to know.
Okay.
I always separate it out.
I had a question also on page 36. Repair and patch the roof from grease spill. What was that? Said there was a repair of the roof for a grease spill?
For Lutz Roofing Company for $1,688.
$1,688.
Yeah, it's definitely the flat roof. And I don't recall if there was a leak or there was a blockage of some sort. I was trying to remember what it was. I think it was a blockage. We had to have them come out.
You mean the one out here? Or dug in here?
Yes. Over the community room, basically.
Did you get answered?
Yeah, it just seemed weird that there was a damage to the roof from a grease spill. I was... Maybe the description was...
Repair and patch roof.
Wrong or...
I think it's abbreviation. Spill? Oh.
Yeah. It just caught my attention.
Yeah.
We can bring the invoice back to you.
Yeah. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, anything else that pulled on any of the...
Technically, that's on the disbursement.
Good gracious. Which is... I'm totally off. This is the first of... We're not supposed to have this tonight. That's why I'm completely utterly off. Okay, sorry. We need to do the approval of the consent agenda.
Right.
And then, I'll do that all over again.
So, move.
Well, second.
It's been moved to second. Did you have a discussion about it?
Yeah. So, I'm just curious why Point C is part of the consent agenda?
Yeah.
As in the past, you've been receiving your city investment reports and interest reports quarterly. So, I just listed it out specifically as one of the items.
No, no, no. Under the consent agenda. Michigan's... Miss... Approval of Michigan First Credit Union long-term.
Oh. Why is it the consent agenda? As opposed to an act title?
Action.
It's actually appears on your agenda in both places.
Okay.
It could... It really, it's a routine easement agreement for a development such as Michigan First, where, as the engineer had indicated, this is allowing the city to, in the event that the developer fails to maintain their stormwater detention basin, it allows the city to go on and maintain that at the expense of the developer. So, it's a standard construction document that needs to be recorded with the Register of Deeds. So, it's really, to be quite honest, not up to a whole lot of debate. So, that's why it was included on the consent agenda.
And I didn't catch it. I had originally put it on the regular part of the agenda. And Scott Ringler, the engineer, has suggested that because it was routine, it could actually be on the consent agenda. And I didn't take it off.
It's been moved second. Is there any other discussion for it? Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda has been accepted. Now, I'll jump down and consider the approval of dispersment in quarterly investment reports. Dispersment reports is from December 1, 2018 to December 15, 2018, for $52,077.16.
I'll move to approve the distribution report from December 1 of 2018 to the 15th of 2018 for $52,077.16. Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Any more discussion?
Yep.
Hearing none. Move down to the dispersment report for December 15 to 2018. Excuse me. December 15, 2018 to December 31, 2018, which is for $505,212.15.
Make a motion to approve the distribution report from the 15th of December to the 31st of December for $505,212.15. Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion on that dispersment report? Next would be the city investment report with the quarter ending December 31, 2018. Guess you don't have to approve that. Anyone?
Make a motion to approve the city investment report. Quarter ending December 31, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor to approve all of the dispersment and quarterly investment reports? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? They are now approved. Now, we have the consideration of the acceptance of the departmental reports.
Can we make a motion to accept the department reports? Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor to accept the department report? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? They now are accepted. Now, invite the public. If there's anything that you would like to discuss that's not on the agenda, to come to the microphone and just state your name. And anything? Anyone? Visiting? Okay. And then, jumping down to the public hearing. For first one up is the special assessments.
And this is the special... The public hearing for special assessments for general purposes during the 2018 year, whether for unpaid grass or weed mowing charges, delinquent water and sewer disposal charges, sidewalk repair charges, or otherwise.
And then, it's also the public hearing for the vacation of a portion of the 11-mile alley.
You're separate.
Do them separate? Okay. So, then, if there's a... This is the public hearing for the special assessments for the grass cutting. Excuse me, in the water?
Yes.
That's where you can say anything that you would like about the special assessments? Okay, hearing none. I'll close the public hearing for that. Next public hearing is for the vacation of a portion of 11-mile alley.
And this is to consider a partial vacation of the alley between Lathrop Boulevard and Lexington Parkway north of 11-mile. And the detailed legal description is provided.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to be heard on the partial vacation of the public alley that is part of 11-mile alley, which I guess it's the... Right behind the Lathrop Town Home Development Project?
Correct.
Yeah, this is actually runs through the Lathrop Town Home Development, the part that's already been constructed to the east of the parking lot there. So, there's a platted alley that was never developed. But in order to create a parcel for their development, they need to vacate that alley.
Did you get that?
James Farrell. 27040 Lathrop Boulevard. The house that's surrounded by this new development. And my concern is pinpointing the area you're talking about vacating. And, I mean, you're speaking to legalese. I don't really understand what you're talking about. And at the end of the notice that was sent out, it says something about vacating Sunnybrook. What is that about?
I'll try to pull up a map for you right here. I thought it was included. But no, there's no vacation of Sunnybrook.
And this alleyway, does it extend all the way up to Lathrop Boulevard?
No, the proposed vacation...
I kind of see where you... The area you're talking about vacating. But I'm wondering, does the alley itself extend all the way up to the Boulevard?
The portion that they're requesting to be vacated does not extend. It actually... The portion that extends out to Lathrop Boulevard, they're interested in licensing that alley from the city. But the vacation is... See on my computer here. So, this is Lathrop Boulevard here. This is the portion that's proposing to be vacated. So, this is entirely within their development.
And you mentioned they're talking about licensing something up here?
Yeah. That's not a... That's indirectly on the agenda for this evening. We're discussing the coming up with a policy for licensing.
So... Trying to understand.
So, that's the portion that they're proposing to license. This is the wall that would be adjacent to your parcel on the north end there of that alley. That alley actually abuts your property.
And you're saying they're talking about licensing that whole 20 feet area?
Yeah. That's a... Would already... The area south of the wall is what they're requesting the license.
The area south of it. What about the area... Yeah, the area south of it. That's adjacent to my property, right?
Correct.
They can have... They have a right to that area also?
It's the city... The city owns the alley. So, they're requesting... They haven't requested yet, but they've expressed an interest in requesting a license agreement to utilize that alley for their parking lot, yes.
And it can be done?
It's a possibility, yes.
That was my question. But nothing's going on with Sunnybrook?
No.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Kim Love, 27035 Lathrop Boulevard. My question is, the City Council... It states, "The City Council may adopt a resolution vacating a portion of Sunnybrook Avenue." And my question is, how does that... Is that connected to what James just talked about?
No, I see what you're... This... I believe that's a typographical error in the notice. The notice identifies up top at the... The, the notice identifies up top at the, on the bottom is where you were just reading?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think that's supposed to read that it's an alley adjacent to.
Adjacent to Sunnybrook Avenue?
It's adjacent north of 11 Mile Road between Lathir Boulevard and Lexington Parkway.
So Lexington Parkway is in Southfield, right?
Correct. So that alley technically runs from Lathir Boulevard all the way to the city's boundary with, with Southfield.
Even though that's never been an alley, because for years that, that was just a vacant lot, a tree lot?
Correct. Correct. It was dedicated on the city plats to be developed as an alley, but it was never developed.
Okay.
So they're now requesting that, that property, that alley be vacated and that they acquire ownership of that, that, that property.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, I will close the public hearing for the vacation of the portion of 11 Mile Alley and go into the action request, which the first one will be the consideration of approval of the RFQ for the realtor at 19600 Forest Drive.
Mayor and council, if you recall, we had discussions in regards to the future use of the property located at that address, also referred to as the House in the Woods. And council made the determination to seek a realtor to help market that property. So RFQ was issued. We have a respondent and the acceptance of that RFQ is before you for your consideration.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid and award the contract for, for real estate professional services for 19600 Forest Drive.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion regarding the award? Possible award? Hearing?
Discussing who? Did you disclose who the applicant was?
You, did you, when you did the motion?
No, motion to accept, let me rephrase it. Motion to accept the bid and award contract from Laura and Val for real estate professional services for 19600 Forest Drive.
Second.
So again, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion regarding the suggested motion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And a couple questions for you, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying though.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up would be the consideration approval of the special assessments.
Mayor and council, again, this is the item relative to the assessments for delinquent water and other bills that were unpaid in 2018. The property owners have until April to repay the amounts that are placed on their tax bills.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for it?
I'll make a motion to accept, to approve the special assessments.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. Next will be the consideration approval resolution regarding the partial vacation of public alley north of 11 Mile Road between Lathir Boulevard and Lexington Parkway.
In your package, there is a proposed resolution approving this vacation and adopting that resolution.
I can make a motion to approve the resolution regarding the partial vacation of the public alley north of 11 Mile Road between Lathir Boulevard and Lexington Parkway.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. The motion carries.
Vote.
I'm sorry. Oh, you did. Oh, I'm sorry. Now look, I'm already moving on. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Now the motion carries. So next up is the consideration of approval resolution adopting fees, applications and standard conditions of encroachment licenses.
All right, so as we discussed in our study session, there has been an increase in the number of inquiries by both residents and commercial property owners in licensing city-owned property for private use. In the past, this has been done on a case-by-case basis very infrequently. I think in the last 12 years that I've been here, we've done one. So this is not something that, it's very unusual that we've had this many. But based on that, I'm proposing that council adopt a set of standards and conditions so that all applicants interested in licensing city property would follow the same procedures, would fill out the same information required, to have the same insurance policies. There was one, one proposed amendment to my application, and that would be to differentiate on the application fee, whereas resident, for a resident, application fee would be $1,000 and for a non-resident, commercial use, it would be $1,500.
Thank you. Your motion?
Mayor and council, we received a new proposal from American Tower as of?
Not yet.
Oh, sorry.
Never mind.
Sorry.
Still looking for a motion regarding the?
So I'll make a motion to approve the resolution adopting fees, application of standard conditions for encroachment licenses, given those amend, including those amendments, right, that we discussed.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? So specifically amendments of saying the amount?
Correct, the licensing fee amount.
I'm saying should that be in the motion of saying the actual amount?
No, he referenced them.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
Yeah, when will that be activated once it's approved here? Do we need a week to implement or?
Oh, I can have it to the administrator by tomorrow.
Okay.
Shouldn't be a problem. Then the application will be in place and anyone interested in licensing can complete that application.
Okay.
And submit it to the staff.
And just for clarification for the minutes for the residential, that was $1,000 and $1,500 for commercial?
Yes. Correct. And just procedurally, all of these will still require council approval. So the license, the applications will be submitted and they would appear on a council agenda. Council ultimately will be the body granting these license agreements. They won't be done administratively.
So will it be on a regular agenda or we would have to adjourn to the ZBA?
It would be on a regular agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have the consideration of approval of the AT&amp;T Tower license agreement.
Okay, now I'll say it. As of this morning, this afternoon, we've received a revised proposal from American Tower relative to the lease agreement for the cell tower. And I think we need some additional information and clarification relative to the existing contract. So I would ask if you would table this, postpone it until future meetings so that we can do our due diligence relative to getting that additional information.
I'll make a motion to table the AT&amp;T Tower license agreement discussion till a, do I have to say which date of the next meeting or just till a future meeting?
It just could be placed on a table and it'll continue to appear on the agenda until such time it's either removed and voted upon.
I'll move that it's tabled.
Second.
It's moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, this matter will be tabled until a future date. Oh, God. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. It's being tabled until a future date. Sorry, obviously. I'm off. Okay, so next up, we have the consideration of approval resolution for, to adopt, no, back to the long-term storm water easement.
That was approved in the consent agenda.
Yep.
Okay, next one then, we're going to do consideration approval resolution to adopt local pavement warranty program.
Make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the local pavement warranty program.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, what are the details other than what we've read for the warranty? Obviously, we have to go out and get quotes for the, I guess the city's going to organize that.
It's, this is from the MML. It's, it's kind of, one of you guys want to explain it, you guys can otherwise offer it.
Well, MML provided information to us as well as the sample resolutions. But basically, the state is requiring any local municipality to have these warranties relative to the pavements that are placed that receive partial funding from the state. So they have two resolutions. One is for the adoption of the local pavement warranty program. And then the second resolution is relative to implementing that program.
Yeah, so it's a consideration of a warranty. It's only, if I read it correctly, it's only required in certain instances where there's more than $1.8 million in spend.
Right.
There's MDOT or federal funds associated with it and $1.8 million is actually spent on the road itself.
Road only, no, no sidewalk.
So we, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor for the, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. So the motion to?
Adopt.
Adopt, that's where I was going. The local pavement warranty program has passed. The next one is for the resolution to implement the pavement warranty program.
I'll make a motion to implement the warranty, pavement warranty program.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, what's the time period to implement? Is it, is there a 30-day process to activate or is it just a phone call away?
Well, I guess technically it's being, it's in place as of your adoption. It would only be activated when we have a project that meets that $2 million threshold.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, does this have to be a roll call? I'm only saying that because I'm looking at the way that this, the actual resolution is written out. We can, we can.
Even for the previous one also?
No, it's just for this one.
Oh, just this one, okay.
Roll call? Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui?
Yes.
Motion adopted.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I like that ring.
To, next up would be the consideration of the approval of the resolution honoring Black History Month.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution honoring Black History Month.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Can we get into additional details as to what the events will entail?
Yeah, I probably handed the city manager his own report.
Can we, can we get some additional information as to the events that are scheduled today? Okay.
Yes. Do you want me to do that now or?
Under the city, under your report.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so was there any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. All right, so now, I don't have that in this one either, the consideration for the approval of the traffic control order.
I'll make a motion to consider the approval.
Needs to be discussed.
So the, this has been having an ongoing problem with individuals parking in front of residential mailboxes. So the police chief has proposed a traffic control order which would prohibit parking 8:00 a.m. through 5:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday on all streets adjacent to the business district along Southfield Road, as this is primarily where the problems have been occurring. Traffic control order requires approval by city council and then installation of the traffic control devices. In this particular case, it would be no parking signs. Once those are implemented, then the traffic control order would be effective.
I make a motion to table this until we get, we have further discussions and hammer out the details as to what implementation will be activated, whether it's on both sides of the street or just on the side where the, the mailboxes are.
Are just, right. I'll second that.
Thank you.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
No discussion, I'll motion to table.
Well, I have something I wanted to say. The only thing is that what bothers me is that the residents that are on these particular streets are having some major issues with it. And so just my opinion, keep tabling it or putting it on pause, you're extending the issues that these people are having by not receiving their mail. So I only hope that when our next meeting is that we can make up our minds that we can do something.
Could we, could we add it to the next meeting?
Or can we just hash it out now? I mean, I think.
I think you need to hash it out personally because you're kicking it down the road and they're having issues now.
Because we've talked about it.
Yeah, just a quick question, because we just tabled the motion. There needs to be a vote on the motion, so if the motion fails, then you can continue.
Okay.
Okay, so all, all in favor say aye. All opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, thank you.
Opposed.
Okay, so it fails. So now, back to the?
The request is to consider or approve a traffic controller that was issued by the police chief. Is there?
Nope.
No.
He's not here.
He's there. Saying he's not here either.
All right, well, I'll start. Yeah, so my, my problem with the way that the current traffic control, control order is written is that it prohibits parking on all adjacent streets to Southfield Road for the entire corridor between 11, well, I'm telling you, it would be 10 and 1/2 to.
10 and 1/2 to, yeah, to 12.
The issue that we're having is really only on two streets and is primarily in the fact that the mailboxes are being blocked and so that people can't, so that the postal office refuses to deliver mail to those people whose mailboxes are blocked by parking from the businesses that are adjacent to those streets. But by enacting this ordinance, we are penalizing everybody in Lathir Village by not allowing them to park on the street Monday through Saturday from, I think, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., which I don't think is reasonable. So in the study session, what we talked about, what I proposed was to change the traffic control ordinance so that it only prohibits parking in front of mailboxes on the streets that are adjacent to Southfield Road. So this, this would solve the problem of mail delivery while not imposing hardship on residents who need the spaces in front of their houses to, to, to park. So that's, so I would propose that we change the ordinance to prohibiting parking on those adjacent streets and only in front of mailboxes.
Only on the two streets?
No.
No, no, on the, on all streets. So can we make that change here? Is that possible or do we need to?
Technically, the traffic control orders have to be issued by the traffic control engineer who is the chief of police. But I think we can, council can approve a traffic control order with the conditions that they've imposed here tonight. That traffic control order can be amended by the chief. And then again, once the signs are implemented, just for clarification, is it the entire side of the street that the mailboxes are located or simply in front of each mailbox?
I would say simply in front of each mailbox. Because in some of them, there's, there's enough of a gap that you can, you can still park and not block the truck from.
Can the public comment?
Not, not, I mean, if the mayor would like to engage the public, but there's not, it's really not open for public comment.
I think one issue is, or something to consider is will the post office deliver, if we don't, if we implement this and say you can't park in front of my mailbox, is that good enough for the post office to deliver the mail? Do we know that?
I mean, the whole reason why they weren't delivering the mail is because they could not get to the mailboxes. So they're taking it where?
So they're taking it where now it's a ticket of offense that they don't park in front of. The post office should deliver mail. That, that's why I say should deliver mail at this point.
Yeah, the biggest concern.
Go ahead, Cheryl.
Well, thank you. If I could offer, because there might be a narrow and different interpretation of what is in front of a mailbox and they can leave literally one foot.
So it should be those three.
So it might be easier to enforce and understand for everyone if there is just simply no parking on the side of the street that has the mailboxes.
Yeah.
Aren't there mailboxes? There's not mailboxes on both sides of the street?
No, just one side, just one side. Because I could see that if you have a car that's, you know, small enough to park right before the mailbox and then the truck comes and tries to do that maneuver and can't get where the window is where they put the mail from, from their window to the.
They won't do it. He said he won't do it.
They just won't do it.
He wants to drive on whatever street, drive straight down and put all your mail in. He will not zigzag in and out.
Okay.
He says, I'm not gonna do it if I cannot reach your mailbox. I want to drive straight down.
So I would say one side.
Yeah, I'd be fine with one side.
Yeah.
The postal service said they want to drive on the street, drive straight down where the mailboxes are and deliver the mail and then leave. He will not zigzag. He or she will not zigzag. Period. And you know that's because you live where? On Roseland? I live on Roseland. Thank you. So.
Yeah, I'd be fine with one side.
Yeah, too. That's fine.
So just to clarify, your recommendation is that there will be no parking Monday through Saturday, 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. on the side of the street in which the mailboxes are located.
For the, the streets that are.
The streets that are adjacent to the commercial.
Yeah, to commercial.
Okay.
It's gonna be quite the no parking sign.
So, thank you. But you want to come up here just to repeat what you said so they can hear it?
The postal service delivers later than 5:00 p.m., especially on the weekends.
Okay.
I'd say be fine saying 6:00 p.m.
6:30?
Depends on who you get that day from the post office.
Well, that's right.
They've been late, later than that.
Depends on who you get that day. Exactly right.
I think that, safe.
To be safe, 6:30, they won't, probably won't deliver past.
I don't know. I have no idea.
I mean, that's reasonable. That's, you know, that's business hours.
I'd say 6:00 p.m., but that's fine.
6:00 p.m.? Is that?
So, okay, Scott?
So.
Okay.
6:00 p.m. is alright.
After reading.
Is there really a lot of traffic after 6:00, 5:00 or 6:00 p.m. in terms of parking on those streets? On Roseland, yeah. No question, no question.
They're good.
So do I need to remake a motion?
Yeah. Use your new motion.
I asked way past 8:00 p.m.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to prohibit parking on the mailbox side of the streets between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday.
For the streets that are off.
For the streets that are, that are adjacent to Southfield Road within the confines of Lathrop Village.
Commercial district.
Commercial district. Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any additional discussion? Duly noted.
The hope is that this, by, if these problem vehicles are the same vehicles that are parking here, if they receive a citation, that they will find a new place to park.
So, and then it's also because of the businesses that are there and they're not open on Sunday. They're not, I haven't seen that they have a lot of traffic on Sunday.
They're open on Sunday. They just don't have.
As much.
Over influx of vehicles on Sunday, but they are open.
Yes. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Motion carries. Next up, we have the city administrators' report.
Thank you. Mayor and council, I'm very thrilled to let you know that we have two positions filled. The first one is Kilda London. She is the Assistant to Government Operations, working with the Building Department and all of other departments. She started on the 28th. And the other person just started today, Suzie Steck. She's the Manager of Community and Economic Development. The Parks and Recreation Coordinator positions, we've narrowed that down to four individuals and they are going through their next round of evaluations. I wanted to let you know that I will be attending the Michigan Municipal Executive's Conference, which starts tomorrow. So I will not be in the office the remainder of this week, but you can always reach me by email and text and cell phone. Our next staff meeting will be Tuesday, the 12th. So City Hall will be closed from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. so that everyone can attend. We sustained water damage on New Year's holiday. And we have filed a claim with the insurance carrier and they have provided us with the remediation check to cover most of those costs. And it was pretty cold the past few days. And actually, I was forced to close City Hall by the mayor Thursday because it was pretty cold in here and the staff was shivering. But, okay. The Planning Commission, three of the positions, the terms are coming up. So you are accepting applications for reappointment and appointment. And that deadline for those applications is the 15th. Also, at the last meeting, the, they voted on their officers and Mr. Petrowski and was elected as the chairperson. And Ms. Miller was elected as the vice chairperson and Mr. Brown as the secretary. There is board of review training on February 14th. Three representatives from Lathrop Village have confirmed and will be attending. Michigan Municipal League is having their advanced elected officials academy, February 22nd to the 23rd in Frankenmuth. And also, relative to MML, Michigan Municipal League, I was invited to be a panelist on their March 19th workshop to talk about council manager relationships. I asked them if they wanted the good, the bad, or the ugly. But, but this is all good, so they'll make it easy. Congresswoman Brenda Lawrence is going to be starting a mobile office hours here at Lathrop Village for our residents on the fourth Thursday of each month. And those, that, so the next one will be February 28th from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And you can ask any questions that you would have with a congressperson. The Downtown Development Authority, their next meeting is scheduled, well, actually, it was canceled as of today. It was going to be scheduled for February 11th, so now it will be in March. And they have elected their officers, Bobby Lovins as the chairperson, Dan, I didn't write his last name, as the vice chair, and I'm the secretary. And if, you've probably already heard, South Oakland Shelter is going to be merging with Lighthouse of Oakland County. They have indicated they're going to maintain a presence here in Lathrop Village. The Southfield Chamber is having their State of the City address on Monday, March 18th. And our mayor will be one of the speakers that day. That's at 11:30 a.m. at the Regency Manor. If you're planning on attending, please make certain that the clerk is over there so she can make your reservations. And Sunday, February 17th. We will have our Black History Month celebration. And Ms. Rosie, who I understand is quite renowned for her interpretations of historical figures, will be presenting Mrs., herself as Mrs. Coretta Scott King, an interpretation of the life of Mrs. King's husband, Dr. Martin Luther King. It's a free event and it will be in the community room at 3:00 p.m. There's a senior night out that is in the early stages of planning for March 15th. That's a Friday from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. There will be music and dancing and food and festivities. And we welcome anyone's help in trying to do the preparation and planning for that. And as you're aware, you had the Marijuana Town Hall meeting last Saturday, the 26th. And there is still the survey available online through Survey Monkey. And if you do not have access to the internet, you can go to the police counter and get a hard copy of the survey. That concludes my report.
Thank you. City attorney?
Nothing for me tonight.
Thank you. Any reports from?
Yeah, Planning Commission?
Yes.
So at the last Planning Commission meeting, there, we approved for recommendation to the council the site plan and special land use for a convenience store and gas station at 26727 and 26751 Southfield Road with a 4 to 2 vote. We discussed a conceptual site plan for Jagged Fork, who is looking to move into the now-closed Honey Tree, which is a pretty exciting prospect. It's a breakfast and lunch, brunch cafe place. They own, or they currently have three locations, plus Hudson Cafe.
Correct, yeah.
They brought their pictures of their food and menu items to the Planning Commission and it looks very good. They're also going to put in an application for the liquor license that was in place at Honey Tree to serve things like mimosas and Bloody Marys and things like that along with their brunch. We discussed what zoning ordinances we were going to review for 2019. The primary one will be village center uses, which apparently has not been looked at for a few years. So that's going to be the biggest priority. We approved the 2019 meeting dates, elected officers as, as the city administrator alluded to a few minutes ago. And then we also received the required annual report from our, our city planner. And that was it.
Thank you. Any unfinished or new business?
Yeah, just a quick question. When is the signup deadline for the Frankenmuth training? Yeah, let me know. Okay, okay, thank you. Okay. Alright, thanks.
I thought I had it right here, but it doesn't have that.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
Okay. Anyone else? So I wanted to thank everyone that called, emailed, came out, sent smoke signals for the marijuana discussion. That was very interesting. And my thing is what I think the smart thing for Lathrop to do is at this point is to probably, we're gonna discuss it, don't think that this is my decision that's happening now. But I think that Lathrop should opt out and do a, put together a task force of residents, of people that own dispensaries, people that are against it, medical professionals, just stakeholders to really do a lot of research and a lot of informational gathering and then make a solid decision maybe by the end of the year. Because it was just, I think that we, we all need to be very knowledgeable in the pros and the cons of doing this. And I don't think that we, as a council, should do any type of knee-jerk reaction because it was, it was mixed information from the people that were here, were against. But the people that are usually against things show up. The people that are for things usually do not. So if you saw some of the surveys that we saw, it's a total different story in the survey than what was represented at the actual discussion. So I think that we should have some discussions and I think that we should have people that are very knowledgeable about it, to be a part of it. And I think that that should be a task force that we post and ask people to be a part of. And a monthly meeting to get the information together and then present it to the council every quarter or every two months or something like that so we can have an informed decision. So.
Did you say that we should opt out? Be one of the cities that opts out?
Yes. That's, I mean, that's.
Would you need a task force to do that?
No, we don't need a task force to do the opt-out. It's a task force that I was thinking that we should get together because it's not forever as an opt-out. If you opt out, it's not like you're, you're finished with it forever. You can opt back in.
Right. I think the idea is to opt out temporarily. So that, more than likely, the state is, is gonna take a full year to come out with the regulations. They have a year. They're probably gonna, based on what they did with medical marijuana, they're probably gonna take the full year. But this will protect us. If, should they come out with it tomorrow and say, alright, here's, here's the rules and we haven't, we haven't opted out, by default, you're opted in. So if somebody, you know, tried to apply for a license, then we find ourselves in a little bit of a gray area. So I think what Kelly is saying is we opt out temporarily, put together a task force and then readdress it. And that protects us for the short term. And then reassess it as we get a little bit more information and then make a decision at that point.
Do you have any idea how the other communities operate to consider their decision to opt out?
So all I know is that Southfield is at 180-day moratorium. We, well, we already did that at one point. But still trying to get in contact with people to find out exactly how did they come up with that decision. So far, it's only one city that's actually rolling on. I can't remember what city that is.
Walleye. Oh, that's, that's, that's Medical.
That's operating out?
That's, I mean, excuse me, that's up and running or they're starting.
Oakland County.
Yeah.
What is this? Was it Wexel?
Ferndale, I think Ferndale opted in, didn't they?
No, it's one that's about to operate like right now. It's ready to.
Well, for, for Medical, they can.
The state hasn't issued any recreational licenses.
Right, right. But for Medical, they, they, I think it's Walleye.
Someone at the, at the discussion said that she was one of the first.
Ann Arbor.
Oh, yeah. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, they're just starting to open with the, with the Medical and Walleye was the first one in Oakland County. And that is, they're just about to open or if they haven't opened already.
And I think that would be, but I did also see how the other cities are operating with it. We don't, you know, we don't always have to be the first for everything out there, but, you know.
I listened to the, the meeting that Pleasant Ridge had and they also opted out. And the reason, one of the big reasons they said is due to potential litigation. Because they said if you, if you opt in and then the rules come out and you've done things that aren't as part of the rules and you make changes, you open yourself up for litigation, which would cost money and time and all that stuff. So their thought was just wait and see, you know, opt out, let the rules come out from the state, figure out, you know, if you really want to do it or not, and then you could always opt back in. And the other thing we, the task force is a great idea, but then I think that will give us, you know, really, we should try to get data, right? That'll give us some data on what's really happening. Are they really not dangerous at all? Are there issues with it? But then also, we gotta look at, does it fit with what we want Lathrop Village to be? You know, is it part of our master plan? Is it part, is it part of the vision of the city?
Right, right.
Doesn't that carry, wouldn't that carry seem to be unknown?
Probably, but I mean, we gotta talk about it. For example, this, this, the surveys, the, you know, we had an initial look at them after, I think, I think there were 77 responses and it was about 65% in favor.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, that's why at the, at the town hall, I really recommend to everybody, please do the survey. Tell your friends, tell your neighbors. You know, even if you went to the town hall, fill out the survey. Can anyone do that survey though?
Yeah.
So any non-Lathrop person?
I will say that that's the only little caveat, that's the only, which I was gonna ask you about, whether or not, how do you differentiate? Because I know I put my name in it, but I didn't know if it was optional for you to put your name in it. Because you're absolutely right, that was not limited to where it's a Lathrop Village resident, where it could have been 77 dispensary owners that went and said that Lathrop wants it. So I just, I, we just, I feel like we just need to really tighten it up. And that is my, what I think that we should do it right now until all the other things in the state and everything gets ironed out. Because I'm also afraid of the same thing that would happen kind of like what in Detroit when it was an opt-in or when everybody opened up their things and then they tried to close the door afterwards. I just don't think that that's what we really want to see going on, so.
Yeah, the biggest concern based on the, the town hall was, we, we had a lot of misinformation. So, you know, when you, when you grew up in the 50s, 60s and 70s, marijuana is illegal and there is this mindset that it is still illegal. And in fact, it's not.
It is federally, it's still.
At the same, yeah, on the federal level, on the federal level. But, but then there was information that wasn't accurate. So we weren't getting accurate information that we could actually take and say, okay, yeah, this is a pro, this is a con. So rather than just take it as hearsay, we need to just take a step back and really understand what it is and whether or not it fits this, this city. That's it.
So I thank you all for being a part of that. Yes, sir?
If you eliminate data on the survey about two days or three days ago, was 90% against it? If you looked at the survey results.
I have not looked at the survey results lately, but when I first did, it was 65% for. So we'll have to, and once we get them all, if we can publish what the results are, so everyone can see it for themselves. I appreciate that. But I could go on for hours to talk to you about marijuana, but I think that you probably don't want me to do that. This is my voice. So is there any other unfinished business or new business?
I just want to thank everybody for coming. It's great to see so many people in the, in the audience. People who weren't here to speak specifically, who just came to watch, that's great. We want more people to. We want more people to do that.
Yeah, we do, for sure.
May I have a motion?
Make a motion to conclude the meeting?
Second.
Thank you for coming out. You all have a great evening.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.